I'd like to call to order the Riverside Township Board of Trustees Meeting of September 8th, 2015 to order. John, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call on the board.
Trustee Ertler?
Here.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Here.
Supervisor Tusher?
Here.
Let the record note, trustee Giesemann is not in attendance. Trustee Clark is not in attendance. And clerk Blau is here.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of August 11th, 2015 board meeting? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns?
I have two things. On page three, the motion that contained the general assistance warrant, number seven item, the amount should be $1,000.
Wait a minute.
Wait, page three?
Page three.
Oh, page four, I'm sorry, page four.
There's letters.
There she is.
Number seven, okay.
Find it. It says 1760, I went back and checked, it is 1750. One seven five zero.
Seventeen fifty?
Right.
One seven five zero, okay.
One seven five zero.
As corrected, John?
Pardon?
As corrected, change your motion to as corrected.
Was there anything else? It says two, I thought.
Yeah, I have another, I wanted to, I mean, I think, just to comment, this is correct according to what I had in my notes too. On page three, B Riverside Arts Center grant. I believe that is correct, that statement there. But if you look at the grant warrant, the grant was issued. So it wasn't.
Yeah, because we've got the financial statement in.
Right, but it wasn't approved based on receiving yet.
Oh, that's my mistake then.
Yeah, I mean, Liam's right here, it was taken.
But we got the.
So what we should do probably next month is ratify.
Yeah.
Put it on the agenda or ratify that.
I'll let the record note that at 7:03 trustee Clark is in attendance.
Thank you.
Do we vote on the amendment? As amended?
Yeah, I made the motion as amended, yeah.
And do I hear a second? Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Communications.
We have a thank you note here, it says to the Riverside staff, township board and staff, our thanks for everyone, for your thoughts and prayers during the difficult loss of my mother and Andy's grandmother from Maryland, Lutka. And we have a letter of thanks from the Village of North Riverside Fire Department for the grant money that was given to the North Riverside Fire Department for the purchase of the TNT hydraulic rescue cutter. It's going to be put to good use, so they thank us for that. Oh, am I supposed to read Joseph's or mention Joseph's email that was in here? Or is that?
No, that's going to come under the plaque.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
You'd be here all night reading it.
My name is Fran Sidkowitz, 252 Herak Road, and I'm here in my capacity as township assessor. I just wanted to keep you informed of what's going on in our office. The appeal period for the 2015 tax year is now officially over. So we will be receiving the final certified assessed values from the Cook County Board of Review, probably by November 1st, I would say. So we had a very robust appeal period with the Board of Review. I don't have any statistics on it yet, but we're pretty busy with it. So we did have a lot of people coming in and appeal.
A lot of recorrections to lower taxes, or?
Well, their assessed values will be lowered, yes. I do think that we did, we tried to give our taxpayers adequate information and let them know if we think they have a good chance in getting their assessed value lowered or not. If we have good comparables, we certainly tell them. But we always tell them that it's, they're right as a taxpayer to file a complaint if they want to, even if we do not have good comparables. So I think most people, if they feel that they don't have a case, they don't make a case. So, but we still had a lot of comparables to choose from. So we did have, I do see equalized assessed values going down again for 2015, but we won't get all those figures until about eight months from now.
That doesn't necessarily mean our taxes for this year will go down, right?
No.
How do you, how do you see it so far?
Well, the equalized assessed values? Well, I do see them as going, the equalized assessed values will probably come down. But that means our tax rates will go up because.
So our taxes will go up.
Because we're going to get their share no matter what, right?
Well, it's not Cook County, you know, 90% of our taxes are local.
Yeah.
They go to the township, to the village, to the high schools. That's where more of our taxes go to. So unless those taxing bodies ask for less money, and they're most likely not, then our taxes will not go down. Unless the high school asks for less money, unless the village asks for less money, unless the grade school asks for less money.
So are you saying that you feel, I know you don't have the figures in front of you, that they'll be about the same or higher or?
I think they'll be a little bit more because I do.
They were a little bit more last year.
Yes, they'll be a little bit more, like I said, unless our taxing bodies ask for less money.
Right.
Our taxes will go up because everyone goes, everyone levies to their full amount. All of our taxing bodies levy to the full amount, which they go up to the tax caps. And as long as there's increases in the tax caps, unless Governor Rauner's plans for a tax raise are legislated, then, then yeah, then yes, I do see them going up a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Fran.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor.
I have no report. Any trustees' reports? And then health board reports are in there, any questions? Under old business. Picking a new law, township law firm since Cowan passed away quite a while back. And we've interviewed three different law firms. Does anybody have a suggestion for a law firm, or two, or three?
I liked the one from Crystal Lake.
Wait, is Steve supposed to speak tonight?
Pardon me?
Was Steve supposed to speak tonight?
No, he, he's not going to speak.
I think he took himself up and running.
Yeah, he.
He was really in it. He was being encouraged, but he wasn't in it. Kelly, yes.
Yeah, that was a laugh, yeah, that was a laugh. I liked him too.
I liked him too, I thought he had a lot of good experience working with townships.
Okay, I, you know, I.
I kind of go with Holland tonight, I liked the way that woman represented her firm. And she had all the figures of what the costs were per hour and everything.
But they're very expensive.
Well, no, she gave a, she gave a discount to the townships.
But she doesn't have per se township experience. She has a lot of municipal experience, but not per se township experience. Whereas the Crystal Lake guy.
No, I agree with you there. I liked Odelson and Sturrock. I, well, let me tell you my thinking. Don't tell me no, John. Tell me no after I tell you what I'm thinking, then tell you can tell me no. You know, yeah, there could be a conflict of interest. If there was, I could see us getting rid of it, but that's in the back of my mind. But what's to me more, more important is they're in the area constantly, okay? They know, they know what's going on between North Riverside Lions, you know. That's, that's what sticks out in my mind. They're, they would be more tuned in to what's going on. That, that's the only reason why.
I'm still concerned about the conflict of interest part. So, I mean, if you ask me, you know, I think Holland and Knight.
Thank you.
And I can't pronounce the other, but Matsusiewicz and Kelly, either one of those two, I mean, it would go along with the board. I would prefer Holland and Knight, but Odelson I could not vote for, I'm sorry.
Ian, what do you think?
Of the three, my preference would be Kelly from Matsusiewicz and Kelly.
Do I hear a vote? Do I hear a motion to hire Odelson and Sturrock? Hearing none, it falls to the wayside. Do I hear a motion to hire Holland and Knight? Hearing none, it falls to the wayside, they won't, okay. Do I hear a motion to hire something, something, Kelly? I can't pronounce it.
Matsusiewicz and Kelly.
Matsusiewicz and Kelly.
Yeah.
I have some phonetics with that.
Going 101 North Virginia Street, Crystal Lake. Do I hear a second? Roll call, any questions, concerns? Roll call.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried to hire Matsuwicz and Clark, if that's enunciated correctly. And Kelly, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I think since we are bringing somebody new on, that I would like to see us have that person come to one or two board meetings to see how, if they think we're doing things correctly and maybe look at some things that we're doing to give us a, you know, their perspective on it.
It might be better if they came to the office on a workday to look at.
Not sure that we don't want to do that.
Really? I thought they could spend more time with that.
How we're running our meeting?
I have no.
And things like when we do the grants, I mean, it'd be nice if he could be here when we do the grants. I have a little concern about some of those grants. And, you know, just to get.
What are your concerns about the grants?
Well, the ones that we make to, like, we make our purchases and then give it to the village of Brookfield or North Riverside or whatever. I mean, should we be getting some kind of agreement with them? I mean, are we really, who owns that then? Do we own it or do they own it?
Well, you get them here and you can ask them, yeah.
Wouldn't they ask them to come to a meeting or two?
I will ask them to come, tell them, you know, we decided that we would like to have you represent us. But please show up at November's meeting because that's their next grant meeting, right?
Right, just to give them an idea of the board.
November's, oh, sorry, I had, November's meeting is usually the third week.
Right, it's the third week, correct, because of the conference and.
Wait, what?
The third. November's meeting is usually not the second Tuesday, it's usually the third Tuesday because of the conference.
Right.
So just make sure it's the correct day.
And as far as, I mean, I don't know about spending a day at the office, but maybe there would be some things that we should review, ways that we're, you know, words that we're using.
Well, we'll give them the audit.
Well, I don't know if that really helps much, it's just.
Do we, I want to prepare a list of questions for him of stuff that you're concerned about and hand it in, or, you know, hand it in to Rich beforehand and then, you know, Rich can review them and.
I would think he would have the questions.
Or everybody, everybody hand it, or we can review them together, but do people want to?
Oh, they could just.
Come up with a list of questions.
Everybody make their own list and ask the questions when they're here, like we did in the interview.
If the firm is familiar with township government, as Mary Robb says, I think, you know, they're pretty much aware of how we operate here and what we're doing, but it should have a hands-on though.
Right, so hands-on is what we should be doing and what we are.
Right, exactly.
I mean, it's, you know, just to, from his perspective, his knowledge. Because we never, I mean, did Richard Cowan ever come to a meeting? I know we've, we've worked with him by phone and.
I remember once or twice, I remember him coming.
Did he?
Really?
A long time ago.
Yeah.
I mean, it might be a good kind of a refresher for us to have somebody like that take a look at some things. Make sure we're on the right track.
Well, we're not. I already signed a plaque for three parts to pick up. The only thing we have on the agenda is a maximum cost, a size and a location.
Can we add without this, what's his name, Jim Nosek being here? I mean, is he just going to ruffle any feathers because nobody?
It doesn't matter, he knows when the meeting is. He knows, Joe knows that it's going to be tonight.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to be too concerned.
I know, I know how this can go down, so I want to make sure we're doing the right thing here.
I don't, well, what are we going to wait until he's back from Texas sometime in the future?
No, no.
Well, I agree. We don't, we don't have to, you know, go by his schedule.
I agree, I just want to make sure that.
Well, nothing's for sure with this.
But we have some samples, right, of our own plaques, right?
We're saying we're voting on the cost, the size and the location.
And the location, not what's going on.
There was a smaller pamphlet, I can remember.
Which I told you, the, well, and the estimate that we had for, just from what was in one of these brochures, it was a plaque with her head on it.
I remember that.
And a few sentences, I want to say it was.
We're not going to get into what's going to be on there.
Right, no, I know, yeah, not, we're just going to, no, we're not going to get into what's on there, but.
The plaque by the elevator when Garrett had. It's 24 inches wide by 14 inches deep.
It's a nice sized plaque.
Nice sized plaque. I'm just telling you, this is what that one size is.
24 by 14?
Uh huh.
God bless you.
Do we want something that big?
I don't have any objection to anything that big, but I don't know what the cost is.
Well, that's.
And I think, well, I think Rich had a limit, correct?
Right.
Over five grand?
Oh, no.
Thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred was.
Two thousand twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred, okay.
That would be our contribution, no, they can make contributions.
Yeah, they can.
Okay, so.
But we're determining the size and the.
Well, I think we need to see what we can get for 2,500.
No, if it's, if it's over that, they can, Joe can put the additional funds up or not?
Well, we're not deciding what's on the plaque right now.
No.
We're just doing a budget. So I would say for 2,500, we're going to get half of an eight and a half by 11, or something this size.
No. That's about that size there.
But that's a little, it looks like a little bit smaller.
Yeah, but a little bit larger isn't going to run through 2,500.
Well, you showed me a small catalog, nothing like.
Yeah.
Going back that had a plaque in it that was a decent size, I don't remember the size. And it was like 30, somehow 35.
It was 3,500, right? Yeah, it was 3,500.
Do you remember the size, remember?
See, I think that when I was reading that, that the size was similar to this.
No, not for 3,500.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Can we table the size to see what we can get for 2,500? If that's our contribution, we need to have a motion for 2,500.
No, let's put a max.
Of a max of 2,500.
Of what the township would contribute.
Right.
But what I would do, I would start and see what plaques 24 inches by 14 inches run, okay? And then if it's like $5,000 or something like that, and our limit is 2,500, and if Joe wants to put up the balance.
You know, a lot of it all depends on what's on that. And that's why.
Will the bust?
That one that is on that.
I'm sure the base cost.
Because they have to carve that to her likeness.
Right, I don't.
Or maybe we should put the tunnel, I don't.
I don't know.
So in breaking this down, our maximum contribution is 2,500. Is that what we want to vote?
2,500 or more or less?
Well, do you want to, you want to vote on that tonight? What our maximum contribution would be? And then if we don't have to. But I'm just saying, don't limit it to 2,500 if he comes up with the additional funds.
Well, that's, no, we're only limited to what, we're not talking about the, what's on there right now.
Correct.
We're only talking about what the township is willing to pay for.
Okay, but let's not look at plaques for 2,500 because if.
Right.
He's coming up with additional funds, even a bigger plaque, okay, that's fine.
So what do you want, table this till next month or something, or what?
I think we should table this till next month.
And then what do you want?
And then we could, I can do some research on cost of plaques, you know, and bring in samples. And.
Perhaps start with 24 by 14?
We can start with 24 by 14. I do, we want, we definitely want like a little picture of her on there, right?
Yeah, that's what Joe wanted, yes.
Well, okay, we don't care what Joe wants. I mean, we care what Joe wants, but really, I mean, it's not, shouldn't be a factor in our decision.
No, I agree with you.
You're right, I'm not disagreeing with you.
You know, that should be a factor in our, what we're trying to agree on tonight.
I think.
And I think that's going to be a big expense.
I think the most we should be looking at, the most important thing we should be looking at is the cost.
Right.
That is what I think our number, what priority we should be.
And do we want?
Does anyone disagree or?
Well, we have to set some kind of, yeah.
We have to set a budget, yeah. So right, kind of tentatively, we're thinking $2,500.
Although we don't know exactly what that'll buy.
We don't know what that, but tentatively, tentatively, we're thinking, we want 20, we want to spend 20, up a max of $2,500, so if we can get it cheaper, that'd be great.
Or a little bit more, that's fine too.
Okay.
But not $2,000 or more, you know.
Right, okay. And then is it kind of a tentative agreement, we want a picture of her on it? You know, like.
I would think so, yes.
I would thought so too.
I would start with that.
You know, kind of, well, this isn't really that going to happen, but that's what, okay. So that's what, and then.
And then a list of her accomplishments.
I don't even know if we need a whole list for her. We're not studying what we're having on it, the words right now.
Right, no, what I'm just saying, that's going to depend on the size too.
Well, if you, a list of accomplishments, the offices she held, is that what you're talking, I mean, if you go a list of accomplishments, you're talking a eight by ten.
No, no.
Just statewide offices, I would.
Well, start as state rep, state senator, state treasurer.
Treasury.
We could put state govern, you know, there are many ways we could do that. We could put state government from such and such to such and such. We could put with deep appreciation for everything she's done for Riverside Township or with deep appreciation for everything she's done for the state of Illinois.
Yeah, I would say the state of Illinois.
You would say the state of Illinois?
Yeah.
And then I would, I agree with Ann, list her, the offices she held, the four offices she held. I mean, two were.
We can do that, you know. Okay, wait, once again, we're not deciding what's on there.
No, we're just discussing.
Okay, all right. So we want the four offices that she held.
And maybe the years, if that's doable.
Okay, so a picture of her.
Or from starting to end.
And her year of her birth and the year of her death, right? Okay, so.
I'm going back to 1980, and she was state rep then, and then she ran for senate and Jack Cuban took her seat.
Yes, so, and then, okay, so the four offices. And then do we want, and this is only for discussion purposes, nothing is set in stone, with deep appreciation, you know, we thank her for her service to the people of Illinois?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Probably something like that.
Something to those words, John, what do you think?
Should we mention the township in there, since it's going in the township auditorium? And give your service to Riverside Township and the state of Illinois or something like that?
Oh, okay. Deep, I think the township should be mentioned.
I think that plaque back there is nice, the way it's set up because it has the picture of a hall on one end and then all the wording over, you know, next to it.
Right, yeah, that's the way it is. I take it away, I like that.
I like that.
Because it doesn't look lopsided then.
But even the design on it, the lettering and the coloring is very nice. It stands out, it's like.
Yeah, I remember right there, the thin pamphlet, yes, and I had a circle.
Right, yeah, that's what, I'm sorry, I thought it, that was in one of these catalogs that I brought. But I'll look at that thin pamphlet too. And we want it kind of in the same style as the one next to the elevator, to keep consistency.
That is, that is a nice style, the plaque.
It's almost the same style as that almost.
Yeah, I'll take a picture of these two.
Take a look at it, it's quite nice.
Now, what about the location? Do we want this inside the auditorium or outside?
I believe we should have it inside the auditorium.
Okay.
And as you go inside the auditorium, you've got the two sets of double doors. And then you have one of these things, and it's maybe the chimney or the old fireplace up there as you walk in. So the first set is on your left, you walk into the second set by the stairwell, it's on your right. I would think putting it right in the center there. Because if you put it out in the hall, nobody's going to see it.
Okay, so when you walk in the auditorium, the first set of doors is closest to the elevator, right?
Correct.
And the second set is closest to the stairs.
Correct.
Okay, so if I'm coming in that second set of doors.
Go to your right, it's on the east side.
Go to my right, okay, on that wall.
Well, it, it just sounds like that.
Okay.
It just sounds like that.
And they look perfect.
That's right, and there's a table in front of it, is that, that brown table?
Yeah.
Okay.
See, but, you know, that brown table's always moved and stuff like that for extra room and stuff, so we can't have shelves or anything in there.
Okay.
Okay, well, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So we don't need any motions, because we're tableing this till the next one?
I'm going to put Mary Robb speaks. New business. You've got the size of the one down there?
I will take a picture of it.
Well, here's the size, right, right down.
Okay.
24 inches by 14.
By 14, okay. You know, if you read this thing, this is what they're thinking of, this guy's a graphics expert. Let me see how much something like that was. He doesn't give the size though, he only has the picture, but he didn't give the size of the plaque.
But I'm hoping he's not thinking all that.
No, that's too much information.
Yes.
You know.
Well, somebody wants that they can go online, I'm sure there's a ton of stuff online about.
All right. Okay. In the packet, you see there's a cost for repair, $315. It is, you know, the Mitsubishi air conditioner. You can see a picture of it where it sits by the big air conditioner by the window, then a close-up. It's like the direction vent and opening and closing automatically. Somebody was up there, appears to have tried to open or close it because they might have been too cold or something, and they broke it.
Is that the room right off the kitchen?
No, that's room 30.
Across from the.
It's room 30.
Across from the township hall, so we have meetings in there sometime.
You get off the elevator and walk straight.
Oh, right by the assessor's office. No, that's on the third floor.
Room 30, John, the meeting room, room 30. You get off the elevator and you walk straight.
Across from the auditorium. That's what I meant, yeah.
Across from what?
Isn't that across from the auditorium, right?
No.
No.
It's on the third floor.
Oh, well, okay.
Room 30.
That's the big one. That's by the assessor's office.
Right, it is.
Well, no, they're on one, to the side of the assessor.
Yeah, but that's right next door. That's what I was first thinking.
Across the hall maybe.
Right, correct.
Yeah, the big meeting room. Or the little auditorium, you might want to call it.
So what do we have to do with this air conditioner?
They have to order the part and then install it for $310, $15.
Do you need a order?
That's a relatively new unit, isn't it?
Last year.
Wait, what?
Wasn't it last year?
Relatively new unit.
Yeah, but somebody broke it.
Do we want to put a sign next to the air conditioner?
Yes.
Do not.
Keep hands off.
Automatic air conditioner, no need to adjust or something like that.
Yeah, something like that, so we can prevent that.
Hopefully. Doesn't mean it won't happen.
Now, do we, do we have to vote on the price for this thing at the same bucks?
315.
I thought he said just the part.
That's the cost of the repair.
You have to get the part and put it on.
All right, I'll make a motion that we. Spends $50,000 to suit our heating and cooling to repair the air conditioner in room 30.
One second.
Any questions, concerns? Yeah, I come up with the cost of repair, $315. But, you know, it says the part will need to be special ordered. Now, they don't say it's costing any more than that, so I'm going with $315. And if it's something different, we can, we can always hold off on it.
We have an open motion.
Pardon me?
We have an open motion on the table. He made the.
This is questions and concerns.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Hearing none. Roll call for $315 to repair the Mitsubishi system.
Trusty Kabitski?
Yes.
Trusty Hurtler?
Yes.
Trusty Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Toy educational pamphlet, the registration's in the sheet. You want to go fill it out and drop it off? I think we have October or something to get it in, the last date. I'm thinking about going this year, but I'm going to double check the scheduling. Are you going to take the train if you go in?
Yes.
I'd like to go with, you know, take the train too. So I'm a novice at that, so you can.
It's not downtown Springfield, so from the train station.
And we take a cab.
Take a cab too. And it's not.
And you know the hotel's down there, in there?
Yeah.
So you pick out which hotel is.
It's at the Crown Plaza. I always stay when I'm over in that area at Comfort Suites, I find that comfortable. The problem is, if you don't have a car, you have to walk like.
Two blocks.
Two blocks to the hotel.
I'd rather go Crown Plaza.
Okay, Crown Plaza, and then the Holiday Inn is right behind the Crown Plaza, so it's really close walk. Either one of those is real convenient.
Well, yeah, the Holiday Inn here, the free breakfasts, yeah.
Which you don't get at the Crown.
Right. The Express, I think it's called, if I remember right.
Yeah, it's the Holiday Inn Express.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns?
By any chance, do you have the July, August magazine? I read mine and I recycled it, and I was looking for the schedule.
Probably, I'd say.
If you have it, could you just leave it out one day so I can just, I want to dig through it and look at the schedule?
Schedule for what?
Well, the educational.
Oh, oh, oh.
It should probably be online too, shouldn't it?
It's not.
Oh, it's not, I don't know.
It's not? That's unusual, isn't it?
I don't know.
Okay, FYI, talk fall dinner meeting, that's November 18th, we just, at Williams Cell. Sign up for that if you want to go to. This is November 30th, oh, it's going to be a busy meeting week. Riverside Arts and Profiting Law Statement is there, should be in the FYI. Aging Care Connections, Sports Ball, $215 Invitation, if I remember right, they were very expensive, I can't remember.
$150 a person.
Yeah. Build your Brookfield Appreciation for the Township Board, Monday, September 14th, which is next Monday, at 6:30 at Brookfield Village Hall. And Inter Town Audit, final copies, everybody should have one in their desk or box, and the financial statement sent to the comptrollers and to the county. Okay, do I hear a motion? Any further visitors remarks? No visitors. Approval of warrants.
Okay.
Go, Ann.
Can you pass this, it's signed, signature, it's a plane's not here. Okay, I have a motion that the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, September 2015, in the amount of $13,713.20, as presented to the board this 8th day of September 2015.
Second of all.
Do I hear any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trusty Clark?
Yes.
Trusty Hurtler?
Yes.
Trusty Kabitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
A motion that the board ratify and approve payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, September 2015, in the amount of $825.24. Payroll warrant, September 2015, in the amount of $16,863.90. Health warrant, September 2015, in the amount of $1,630.38. Monthly filings, September 2015, in the amount of $6,519.54. Grants, September 2015, in the amount of $34,907.76. And general assistance warrant, September 2015, in the amount of $1,200. All of the above as presented to the board this 8th day of September 2015.
Second of all.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trusty Clark? Trusty Hurtler?
Yes.
Trusty Kabitski? Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
That it is? I have no comments or reviews, so I hear a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.